Bring your own cup in because it saves money for the restaurateur. It recycles, it helps. And I can tell you Starbucks, which you're not going to get a cup of coffee for a dollar at Starbucks, um, used to have that program. I don't know if they still have that or not, where if you brought your own cup in, you got a discount of so many cents off of the cup of coffee, which was an incentive to bring your own cup. So in lieu of removing the whole section, maybe we just talk about giving a discount of 25 cents if you have your own cup. Now, maybe that 25 cents is too much for McDonald's, which the coffee is cheaper. Maybe it's not, you know, maybe it's, you know, maybe it's 10 cents or something of that nature. I don't know if there's enough incentive there at 10 cents to bring your own cup. But it's a, it's, it's food for thought and really trying to get people to think like, like I think the mayor said about the plastic bags at the grocery store. You know, if you have a way to save a few pennies and you have a reusable cup, why not use it? Why not take it in? It's an incentive to, to, to change behavior, which is what I think we're trying to do, is to change behavior from a disposable society to, to one that's less disposable and recyclable.
I just, it's late, but this, this would apply to 7-Eleven, AMPM.
Yeah, yes, any of those facilities, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Corrigan, I saw your hand.
Oh, it was an accident. But, uh, I still think we should try the pilot program first and then revisit that, this after six months. Uh, if we can do it without adding a cost to businesses or a cost to people and potentially creating more work for frontline folks and weird incentives that we just don't fully understand yet. I, I think a pilot program with something really branded, cool for Palm Springs, that could really be marketed to tourists and residents would be, I'd rather see that as our first step. I agree with you, Councilmember Woods, that, you know, 10 cents bag was just a reminder, right? As the mayor said, every, if I forget a bag, sometimes I'll leave my cart and go back to the car because I feel like, oh my God, really? Um, but I would probably now feel that either way, but that did, it was a good reminder. But if there's pilot programs that can be as effective, I'd, I'd rather try that first. Just my sense.
I agree. So can we approve, um, and with taking out this section about the 25 cent fee and then as Councilmember Corrigan suggested, bring that back with a pilot program and then reconsider, um, a fee later on in six months?
That's fine.
Works for me.
Patrick, you were muted when you spoke.
Uh, that, that sounds fine to me. And, um, I think I would leave the timeframe open, just given where we are and trying to figure out who the pilot might be, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Wood?
Uh, I just want to thank everybody. I mean, this is an enormous amount of work that's gone in. There's been an enormous amount of outreach, a lot of input, even from two council members since the last meeting or the last meeting we had on this. And I just really, there's gratitude towards getting us to a position where we're hopefully a leader in recycling and in the environment. And I hope we continue on this trajectory, um, in this way without being a huge burden, um, but just slowly changing our, our, all of our patterns, including my, my own. So, uh, thank you.
Well said, thank you.
So, um, it's good. I'll move the item with those changes that we all agree to.
A second. Do you have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Corrigan.
Yes.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, and I'll read the ordinance title, which is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, adding chapter 5.87 to Title V of the Palm Springs Municipal Code Regarding Reusable Food Service Ware and Plastic Waste Reduction.
Thank you, city clerks. So it is now 10:30. This is the time in the meeting where we assess the agenda and if we would like to end the meeting, if we would like to move forward with any items tonight or continue those items until a later date.
We have two left. I think we should go. Do it.
Do them.
And if all we have is two items, it shouldn't seem very lengthy.
I would, they're, they're pretty easy items. They seem, they seem easy.
They always seem easy. Okay. Okay, then we will move forward. Does that work for you, Mayor Protem and Councilmember Garner? Okay, so we will move forward with the next item, which is 5A, Discussion of a City Council Strategic Planning Retreat. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, mayor and council. I think we can make this one relatively easy because, to be honest, we don't have to spend a lot of time figuring out all the details at this point. I just wanted to introduce the conversation, get some high level direction, and maybe discuss some of the items that might be a long lead time. So we've talked for a while about holding some sort of a strategic retreat, which is an exercise I think we ought to probably consider doing annually. It might not be always the same very high level, but at very least, we should have a pattern of establishing annual priorities sometime in advance of the budget so that the budget can also reflect those priorities. What I'm suggesting in the staff report here is that we look at a handful of, um, issues, schedule, location, whether or not to have a facilitator. Um, certainly want to set some agenda and discuss inputs and information. That's probably the long lead time item. I would suggest that really to be productive and to maximize the chance of, chances of having a very productive strategic retreat and priority session, that we probably need a number of months. Um, I would even suggest that probably fall or even winter is a really good time. That might not be the best with the schedule because I understand we do have a busy winter season typically with other events and things like that. But from the perspective of planning for the next fiscal year budget, from the perspective of establishing a cycle that might come after election seasons, which isn't the important time to do priority setting, especially when there's a change on council, that really makes a lot of sense. For this year, we have some flexibility in doing it whenever it's convenient. But I would argue that if we're going to have a, a robust kind of method of bringing you input to really weigh the different priorities, we would want that long lead time. And let me just explain why, and then I'll turn it over to you to give some direction. I, I'd like to do a couple of things that I think will be really valuable to you when you sit down to establish priorities. One is I'd like to conduct a, a community survey. Um, I would suggest, um, one that's administered by the National Research Center called the Community Survey or National Community Survey. And that's a boilerplate. I, I think the city's actually done a couple of those in the past, although, um, the most recent is probably 10 or more years ago. What's nice about that instrument is it's a template. So it establishes the opportunity for an internal trend line so we can compare answers today with answers we received when the city administered the survey previously. And it also provides for an external benchmark. So we can see how we fare compared to communities in, you know, all across the United States with the same criteria. And the, the livability criteria are things like affordability of housing, a good place to retire, a good place to raise kids, access to good education, healthcare, you know, all the things that are thought to make communities good and complete. It would take a number of months to administer that and, and compile the data, probably three or four. So if that's something that's important to have before you would do some priority setting, that's kind of the timeframe. And then similarly, I would suggest in addition to reviewing the general plan and other high level strategic documents, this would be a good opportunity for us to check in with the commissions. We've talked about things like historically having joint sessions, and we can still do that. What I would envision in this case is reaching out to the commissions and asking them to weigh in both on high level priorities and any process concerns. So we've had discussions with some commissions recently about, you know, whether or not we would return to having liaisons or whether there should be other mechanisms for, um, you know, communicating back and forth with council. We've talked about the possibility of needing to revise the enabling ordinance. For instance, with the Arts Commission that wants to kind of review its activities and, and maybe su- suggest some changes to make those activities consistent with code or vice versa. So what I think we could do is establish some framework. Could be something like a SWOT analysis or, you know, something that's not too elaborate to complete, where we would ask commissions both what they see as strategic priorities and also any processes that they want to tighten up. That's again, something I think we could just take a couple of months, maybe three, to complete. Deliver all of that to you sometime in the fall and winter as, as a means of really making sure we're thorough as you undertake that exercise to establish priorities. So why don't I pause there, get some direction on those items and anything else you think is important? And then we can always revisit a lot of the particulars, especially if you agree that we can take some time to get this on the agenda and complete it.
Thank you for that. Any comments and feedback from councilmembers?
Question? Yes. So by some time, what are you thinking?
I think an early date to do this would probably be end of October or November, um, and it could take place anytime between then, really, and even February to be well in advance of next fiscal year's budget process. So again, we had good priorities in mind. Oftentimes what happens is if council wants to see any significant changes, think of an area like economic development, which was kind of nebulous in this year's conversation. If we resolve what council wants to do, then staff has some time to plan on what new initiatives, programs, staff, or whatever might cost. So we'd like to wrap that up by spring at the latest.
So my feedback on date would be the sooner of that, not the later. I think we really need to do this and waiting till sometime next year. I think October sounds, if that gives you enough time, would be my preference. I agree on not doing this at City Hall. We've done it in hotels before, once in the Convention Center. Uh, I think the hotel just feels a little even more away than the Convention Center. Um, a facilitator makes a lot of sense to keep things moving. So, um, I think you laid everything out. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with all of that feedback, um, from Councilmember Corrigan. You know, initially we had asked for this last fall. And then we spent a year longer dealing with the pandemic. Um, and I do think it's a good time. We're sort of waited to have our new city manager and have up and running. But we have sort of waited now, um, for many months to really push any priorities. So I know, I appreciate the, um, need to do it right and have enough time to plan. But we have been, I think, holding back on really important council priorities like housing and homelessness and others, um, because, and economic development, like you mentioned, because we want to do it in a strategic way. So I would like to see it sooner rather than later as well. Other comments or feedback or questions? Councilmember Wood?
No, I've done several of these, and, um, I think the outcomes of them are very positive. But I think the process itself with the community and the council and staff, so that everyone's on the same train, at least if we're not sidetracked with something like a COVID pandemic or something, is a great idea. So I would support it.
Thank you. Other feedback? I don't see any. Is there anything else? Mr. Clifton, you need from us?
Nope, that's all. I think what we'll do is we'll work to put some substance to, um, both schedule and process and bring that back at a future meeting. And we'll work to try to get something on the schedule earlier rather than later, as soon as we can estimate the, the lead time on some of those other important input side of the tasks. So that's, that's all.
Thank you, and thank you for thoroughly thinking through how to get all those inputs from the community and our commissions and all of our, you know, all of the inputs. I think that was really important, um, how you frame that, and we appreciate it. Uh, the next item is item 5B, Appointments to the Equity and Social Justice Committee. If we can have a staff report, please.
So mayor and council, I wasn't here when this was created, but I do have a couple of thoughts to share with you. The primary task is to confirm the recommended appointments to this committee, but I do want to share just a couple of things before you go into that. As I understand it, this was established to be somewhat of a temporary or ad hoc committee that for a limited period of time, perhaps not more than nine months, would do some work in the area of equity and social justice. I just want to share with you that, in my opinion, especially if this group is to meet monthly for the typical kind of, um, commission, committee, task force type meeting, which is an hour and a half, maybe two hours, that's really not a lot of time. If the task is to curate a list of topics and, and discuss them only in depth sufficient to establish a rank priority of things and simply hand it over, I think nine months is pretty realistic. My experience with all kinds of working groups tackling even much narrower topics is it's really tempting and more interesting to get into those subjects a little bit, if for no other reason than to justify why they ought to be addressed and to opine at least slightly on how they might be addressed or what components are more important than others, et cetera. So if, if that ends up happening either by design or somewhat organically when the group meets, I think you might need more time. That said, I think something like the use of a facilitator with a subject that is both, you know, sensitive and where there are people with expertise could help facilitate that. And then kind of consistent with what we're looking to do with some of the other commissions for strategic planning, what I would suggest, if this group is going to go in any depth at all, would be to first spend a couple of months creating that list and bring that back to council. I think that's probably a process you may want to deploy with other commissions through this strategic planning cycle. Since this one is brand new, it's perhaps even more important that the group come forward, spend some time kind of articulating some priorities, come back, get feedback from council. Frankly, structurally, one of the challenges we have is you have a lot of systems for input in this council for about 10 hours a month is the only throughput, right? So you already have a lot of work coming to you that we're not getting on the agenda as you've just described, and we're kind of creating a mechanism to identify more work. I think that's okay, but it speaks to the need to prioritize that work before, um, any group really gets after it and, and to save the, the frustration that sometimes occurs when these groups come up with something and then action isn't taken for a long time. So my suggestion is simply that in addition to appointing members, that you make a decision on, um, including a facilitator. And then I would recommend that you task that group with first establishing a list of priorities, review that list and give any direction you want regarding that list before the committee does any additional work. That's all from me.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton. And Councilmember Garner and I were the liaisons to work on this issue and interview and recommend the individuals on that list. Councilmember Garner, do you have anything you'd like to add about that process?
Uh, the only thing I would, I would say is that, um, there were a lot of, I mean, so many people were interested and we, you know, thank all of them for, for applying. We tried to select, um, a variety of different people. Some people who are long-term residents, some newer residents. And, but a lot of them have not served on a commission before. And, um, I know it's one of the things that we thought was interesting was that we had a lot of applicants, um, who had not served with the city before. And I think that's, that's actually quite the benefit for this group because they'll be really looking at things in a different way. Uh, but we still do have two members of the Human Rights Commission who will be working alongside them, who will be able to provide more, um, guidance should anyone need it.
Thank you, and I'll just add, um, we thought that this process could be similar to the CVRA Working Group that we, um, commissioned and went through that process. I know Councilmember Garner was on that com- committee and led that work. So we thought that we would, um, appoint the, um, individuals and then they could sort of, um, help us guide, help city council sort of come up with the scope of work. Um, and then we could confirm that, and then we could give that to them um, to, to go on and make recommendations, just like we did for the CVRA Working Group. We want their insight into what the scope of the work will be because we have experts on this, you know, committee if council appoints them. Um, and we want their input about what the work the committee should do based on their expertise and their experience. So, um, I, with that, I agree with the city manager's recommendations. I think the nine-month timeframe initially was just for urgency. That was the only reason I think that we put that in. So I agree that it shouldn't be time limited. And then I strongly believe that there should be a trained facilitator, um, especially because some of these conversations can be difficult. And it takes a trained person to lead them. So, um, I agree with, with that recommendation on this. Other comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Corrigan?
Sure, um, Woods, thanks both, uh, the mayor and Councilmember Garner for their work. And, um, I know there are a lot of people who applied and you had a lot of great candidates. So thank you for going through that process. Really appreciate it. I agree as well with your recommendations and the city managers. I'm happy to make a motion to appoint these people and approve the funding for the facilitator.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second? A second? Thank you. Is there any further discussion? None? Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Corrigan.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Aye.
And Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is city council and city manager request and upcoming agenda development. So I will first ask the city manager, um, what he needs from us for future agenda development.
Thank you, mayor and council. We did provide a tentative upcoming meeting schedule. It occurs to me that July 8th, we have a couple of items that we could likely defer, if for no other reason than to address other things that have been, um, that we've been waiting to address. So that would include the parks naming policy that was something recently completed by the Parks and Recreation Commission and discussion on city parades and special events. Should we do that? I think we would look either at elevating some items on July 22nd, or there are a few things on our back page that may also be ready, a, a further deep dive on CVP funding so we can resolve that issue. Inclusionary housing may or may not be ready for the first, but we have a few items like that. If, if it's fine with council, um, we can make those changes without a lot of additional direction. If you do have any priorities you'd like, um, please let us know that. And then the only other thing I think we could discuss is whether or not, uh, council would like to return to council chambers for future meetings.
Yes. Councilmember Corrigan?
You're on mute.
I almost never do that. Okay, um, I'm good with, um, you know, giving, uh, city manager, hopefully working with the mayor on moving things around the agenda. I noticed the Section 14 specific plan amendment is set for a public hearing on July 22nd and September 9th. I don't know which is intended, but I would like to see it in July if we can. But I see it on both dates. And then the other thing I was just going to mention is, um, you know, PS Resorts, um, provides 225,000 a year for sort of community events. And in the past, we've always funded the costs, city costs for Pride, you know, the overtime, all the other pieces, which is around $95,000. And they need to know if we're going to do that. So if we can bring that at the next meeting, uh, that would be helpful because they have to plan how long they're doing the festival. And so if we could bring that, that would be appreciated. At least sometime in July.
Yeah, that's no problem. We can certainly do that. Um, I, I, I almost forgot. I think we are also interested in exploring perhaps a joint meeting with, um, the Human Rights Commission to follow up on, um, other, uh, Section 14 related apology and some consideration of the Boger statue.
Yes, and I would recommend that we sort of do that, uh, as planned, um, previously. I know we had to take some time to schedule it, but I think that should come probably as a special meeting. Uh, it's really an opportunity, um, to do some education on the history of Section 14 for the community, um, and to address both the apology, uh, that went through the Human Rights Commission, as well as, uh, their recommendation that we remove the statue from in front of City Hall. Uh, I think doing that sooner rather than later would be, would be good.
Just, just in order to plan council meetings and noting that we go dark in August, I think the last week in July, the week of the 26th, would be ideal from a workload standpoint. There'd be nothing else to, you know, other meetings to prepare for, et cetera, at that time.
That week looks very open for me. I think Thursday nights are typically good just because people are used to that. Uh, open if people think the community will have bigger turnout somewhere else. And I do think that needs to be in person as well. With an opportunity for people to call in.
Thank you. I would like, I think we discussed this before, but I think it would be helpful to talk about how we're planned for just at city staff level, how to incorporate, um, remote access. I think we talked about this with that agenda item last time. You know, how can we allow and continue to allow remote access while also moving to in-person options and just have increased transparency and accessibility that we didn't have before?
And mayor, I think that will be relatively easy for meetings in chambers. Do you also want to have a discussion on, um, how we might handle commissions and other meetings for in-person, including, um, hybrid or remote?
Yeah, do you need to have a city council level discussion or does staff just want to make a recommendation to us?
I, I think we would be happy to make a recommendation, but would still probably want to bring that back. It might include a couple of choices because, again, it's, it's easy to accommodate in chambers because of the AV setup that we have. More difficult to accommodate hybrid meetings that are both in-person and on Zoom in other rooms. So that would really be the primary consideration if we want to go back to something like we used to do where we record all those meetings and put them on YouTube. That would probably take both some staffing and some technology for, for those other meetings. Council, council meetings will be easier to accommodate.
Do we even know what the state is going to allow or not allow in regards to continuation of, of, um, remote meetings? You probably need to answer that question first.
The, the current executive, the current executive order allows for, uh, enhanced video conferencing until September.
Which is just around the corner.
Yep, that works. I agree. Isn't probably worth a lot of staff time if the rules might change in September. Since we're dark in August anyway, for most of our commissions. Other feedback on, um, future items or on the agenda planning or council member requests? So I have two requests as we're discussing input to our list. One is that our planning commission requested, um, that we consider a ordinance requiring solar for commercial buildings, similar to what we did for residential. We have some large commercial structures coming. And so, um, not to add, but I, I do think we've talked about that for many years, ever since we passed this preference for solar and residential in 2017, I think it was. Um, and then I had got a request from Amina Fuller, um, who I believe it lives in District 1, that the city consider a proclamation for Juneteenth, recognizing Juneteenth as a, um, holiday and important date in the city of Palm Springs. And I thought it would also be nice to do a proclamation. in the City of Palm Springs, and I thought it would also be nice to do a proclamation thanking the organizers of the Juneteenth celebration that was last weekend. So I believe, I requested that to work with a Black History Committee, and I think the city manager reached out to the Human Rights Commission to bring that forward to city council. It sounds like city council has not yet ever before taken action to recognize formerly Juneteenth in our city. So if that works, we can send that to the Human Rights Commission and/or the, and city staff to work on and bring forward. Councilmember Woods?
The issue of solar on commercial properties, you know, I think warehouses and stuff like that, you know, there's an opportunity, but that, that work actually came from the Sustainability Commission originally and then was sent to us after it was vetted with them. Maybe there's an ad hoc between the sustainability and planning, but I think that needs vetted a bit because a lot of commercial buildings maybe can support it, but a lot of them have their equipment on top, and some can support it, some can't, and that really needs to be vetted out a bit, and not necessarily at a council level.
I agree. So maybe that could be changed to a request that that go to the planning commission and the sustainability commission.
That makes sense.
Anything else before we adjourn? Mr. Clifton, do you need anything else?
That's all for me.
Thank you, and I know Councilmember Corrus is going to adjourn our meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Rick Pantelli did a wonderful job in sharing about Marv Shul, who died at 93, so I won't repeat everything he said, but you have to smile when you're talking about Marv because he always had a smile for everyone. He founded exotic motor cars in Palm Springs 40 years ago. He served in World War II in the Navy, and if you've been to Veterans Day parades, you've seen him driving his exotic cars. Over the years, him and his late wife were very involved in HIV/AIDS after their youngest son died of complications of HIV, and were honored by both DAP and AIDS Assistance Project. And if you've been to the Steve Chase, not the Steve Chase Humanitarian Awards, which they received, but the Everyday Heroes Award that DAP does, the Marv Shul Red Ribbon of Hope Award was established in his honor, which is really a lovely award. So he really will be forever missed by his family and friends, and we just wanted to take this opportunity to adjourn in his memory. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So with that, in his memory, the next city council, we will adjourn, and the next regular city council meeting will be held on July 8th, 2021 at 5:30. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.